Praise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have all members present with the exception of Lee Schimmick. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second by Tom. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed. That carries six zero. On the consent agenda tonight, we have the check wire transfer disbursement summary, the bank reconciliation statement, approval of the board minutes from the organizational meeting on January fourteenth, the regular board meeting on January fourteenth, the board study session on January twenty-eighth. Donations as follows: to the Prior Lake High School from the Wells Fargo Community Support Campaign, one hundred and forty-eight dollars and eight cents from Loretta Sperry, sixty-seven dollars and thirty cents from Breon Silman, fifty-three dollars and eighty-three cents from Marlaus Geesby, and forty-two dollars from Jay LaPlante. For Greenwood Elementary, one hundred and fifty dollars from Jill Dahl, one hundred and sixty-one dollars and fifty-two cents from Jennifer Iverson. Four hundred dollars through the Prior Lake State Bank debit card program for the Prior Lake High School, fifty-three thousand two hundred and forty-six dollars from Ames Construction for remodeling of the team room at Prior Lake High School, two hundred and twenty-five dollars from Fairview Health Services for sports physicals at the Prior Lake High School, and seven hundred dollars from Target Scholarship America for special education students at Head and Oaks. Resignations and terminations, non-annuals as follows. Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So moved.
By Dan. Second by Tom. All those in any discussion? I guess...all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed. That carries six zero. Moving on to Laker Pride Special Recognition, we have the VFW Post Sixty-two oh eight essay contest winners, and I think we have a few of those with us tonight. As luckily, there's our first place winner, second place is Cassandra Herubin, and third place Scott Erickson. Are any of those here? One of them. Come on over.
This is Cassandra Herubin, and we're very excited that she won the contest from the VFW. Can you tell us a little bit about what you wrote?
I wrote about how I thank you for my founding fathers and all that they did with like the Constitution and how it made us have freedom and rights that not many other people had.
And obviously, it was very well done and appreciated by the VFW and also appreciated by all of us. So congratulations to you.
Thank you.
And then continuing on, we have Jamie Erickson. Could not be here due to the snowball tonight. Recognition for volunteer work. Bridges Area Learning Center Teacher of the Year Sandra...
Oh.
Sandra.
She's going to tell us what it is.
Okay.
Because I know all this already.
This is Sarah Azadicki. She is a teacher at Bridges, and for all the years that she's been here, all four, since the beginning of Bridges, she has been doing a very special activity with the students there, collecting pennies.
Yep.
Can you tell us about that project?
We started out, it's called the Adopt a Hero Program, where you work with, it's a former Marine that started this program with current deployed soldiers, where you send them care packages or, you know, things from home while they're deployed. So we started it as a school thing that we would just, the first year we did it was just bringing in supplies, and then the rest of the years, the other three, we've done a penny war and then bringing in money and stuff for that too and supplies. So this year we did it, and it was the largest money that the amount that we've ever gotten. It was six, over six hundred dollars, which allowed us to send fifteen packages, which was way more than we've ever done before. So it was awesome.
Congratulations to you and all the work that you do with our Bridges students. And many of you may have noticed that on the second insert of the Prior Lake American last week was a huge picture of Sarah's students. She's not in the picture, however. One of the other teachers happened to be standing there at the time, so congratulations.
Moving on to the open forum, we have fifteen minutes aside for citizens for input on agendas not on tonight's agenda. With that, seeing none, we'll move on. Personal items. Matt?
Good evening. First off, I recommend following candidates for employment and seeking board approval.
Do I have a motion to accept the candidates for employment? So moved. By Rich.
Second.
By Chad. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed. That carries six zero.
And secondly, I present the following leaves of absence seeking board approval.
I have a motion to accept the leaves of absence.
So moved.
By Dan. Second by Tom. All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed. That carries six zero. Old business, the EastM partnership with Jeff.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Members of the Board, Dr. Ruber. I'd like to introduce you to Ivan Hing. Interim Executive Director for the National Center for STEM and Elementary Education at St. Catherine's University.
Good job.
We are here this evening to present to you partnership proposals between the school district and St. Catherine's. And this is something I've shared with you back at the work sessions, so you'll see a lot of familiar concepts, but also the opportunity to have dialogue. And I've asked Ivan to share the St. Catherine's perspective as well. To give a little bit of background regarding EastM, of course, just a reminder, but also from board members, last spring, the school board approved the move forward to EastM focus in our district schools. And as part of our process, we had a study team on EastM come together and draft the definition for our elementary schools. And here's the definition that we have before you, which really is central to our efforts to bring EastM to our school districts, starting with elementary, but then subsequently carrying on into our secondary. And it is, and that is what we're striving to be for our definition, is having a interdisciplinary approach to instruction and learning, focused on inquiry, real world problem solving in the 21st century, applying hands-on science, technology, engineering, mathematical practices with projects and field experiences related to the environment. And so that is the definition that is central to what we're doing as an EastM, in our EastM process. Our proposal begins really with our foundation in environmental education. Many of you know the district has a strong history in that. And St. Catherine's has been our partner through much of that as well. Six plus years in bringing environmental education, working with our staff and with our students in the district. As I mentioned, last March, school district approved the EastM focus at the elementary and subsequently secondary schools. And central to that process, and a couple of board members were on that process, on that study process at the time, in all of the work that we did with our review and looking at other schools, looking at other resources, professional development was really central to a strong EastM program looking at the district. And so that has constantly been a thread that has come through, and it's going to be something we're going to continue to provoke, to bring into the district and to support our teachers, because subsequently, they're going to be delivering those activities to the students. And more importantly, this is where St. Catherine's comes in, is to round out that professional development component and component, to bring that to our staff in terms of looking at a cohort model for teachers to pursue a STEM graduate certificate. The partnership goals, when we first reached out to St. Catherine's and looked at this, we really identified four goals. For sure, increase curriculum activities and learning in STEM education and environmental education. Increase student achievement on STEM and environmental education curriculum areas. Looking at implementing a multi-level, multi-year cohort models for teachers at private elementary schools to complete the STEM graduate program. And the fourth one is increase the knowledge level of district teachers through participation, completion of the STEM graduate certificate program, specifically in engineering and robotics. In our conversations, the district has a strong history in life sciences, and that's something we've been doing as an environmental education component. That is also a thread or component to the STEM graduate certificate that St. Catherine's offered, but in looking at what was best fit, what would be best focus for the district, that robotics or engineering component is really the thread that we're looking at with this. With that, I will turn it over to her to give the St. Catherine's perspective.
Thank you very much, Jeff. Can you hear me? I'm not sure where I go. Okay. Thanks so much for you to have an opportunity to come and speak to you about this. We have been doing the graduate STEM certificate, particularly actually in engineering, since 2009. So there's a number of school districts, especially at the elementary level, who have been using our curriculum and our development process. We offer not just the content of the engineering, for example, that was selected in the robotics, but also the support of the teachers to then implement it into their curriculum throughout the year. Studies have shown that teachers go to professional development, get really excited, learn a lot during that time, but then the school year starts and they roll into the old ways of doing things. They've got a lot on their plate. They have a full-time position. We know that. And so what we found is that the coaching throughout the year to implement what they've learned and keep having that conversation to go back again and really see how what they've learned goes into their actual system school curriculum is really important. We really want to see that they integrate it, not add on, because the students' days are very full, the teachers' days are very full as it is. So these three aspects, we actually had a menu of topics, as Jeff said, that we do offer, and these are the ones that came up to the top in that. And I think it's more because it complements what you've already done, as Jeff said, in some of the areas of STEM. And I think leverage is what you already do right now with, I think, your Lego robotics program. So it puts a little bit more meat in the early years for preparing the students for that too. Then, as we said, the implementation coaching is one of the very special things that we offer for this program. That's, we do that normally with the professional development as an option, but the graduate credit is sort of that accountability, that the teacher will actually have some sense that they're getting a grade, so they tend to respond a little better for that, I found. Teachers and students are that way. Then the schedule that we had talked through, and obviously we need to have some more refinement once you give us a go-ahead for that, is basically that it goes over about an eighteen-month cycle, starting this summer would be the first cohort, and then ending at the end of next year's fall semester. We've done a couple of different models. This seems to be the best one, both for teacher learning as well as for implementation, to really get that in there. People have tried to cram things in that in really fast, but then they forget it all and they don't quite know how to put it all together. You want to have, but yet sometimes if you spread it out too far, there's not that intensity for this new topic. Someone had asked me, Tom had asked me, he said, "When teachers come in, are they a bit scared?" And I said, "They're petrified when they talk about engineering," because they've kind, they've heard biology. Often, the teachers have taken it. Chemistry, they probably took physics, get a little more of a leery in the engineering, they just panicked over. And we really work with them on really seeing that there really is an engineering spirit that all humans have, and that they're really trying to awaken that in their students. And then to see how that ties into what they already have to do anyway, with science and mathematics. Okay?
I think the eighteen months also requires application.
Yes.
You know, as far as, you know, learning the content, but then also bringing some of that back to the classroom, and applying it to the classroom students that they have.
This is the basic model that's been used. We actually started our STEM program in the undergraduate with our pre-service teachers, the teacher candidates, because we really felt that they needed to have context to the science, math, technology. And then engineering was brand new. Engineering was required by the state in 2009, and we started in 2005. And I actually started my engineering course in 2003. So we were very much ahead of the curve, because I was just this engineer who was going, "Well, I could offer engineering as a lab course." And they're like, "Oh, sure." And then the women really, we had a lot, we all women students in our undergraduate program, they really, really flocked to it, because there was this practical aspect to it. To some extent, science seemed very theoretical. They're like, "It's interesting, but maybe not practical." So we had a number of, the one that I started with was actually using the house as your foundation, so you see a lot of the different concepts of structures, materials, machines, hydraulics, mathematics, and electricity in a context that's relevant to them. We did this minor and the undergraduate, and now we've extended it to the graduate, as I said, in 2009. These three elements on the left-hand side, that we had really, really motivated STEM faculty in the sciences and the mathematics, and of course, me in engineering and computers, as well as education faculty. And we got them together in a room once a month and had lunch, and they taught, this education people taught the scientists and engineers and mathematicians about standards. And then the science, engineering, and mathematics people taught the education people about main concepts and foundational expectations from the major levels. Then that was combined with looking at those principles, figuring out what students really needed, what the teachers were doing, what they should be doing, and then really reviewed it all through and figured out what really was necessary to make it hands-on, context-driven, relevant to the student, and active learning. Those are the elements of all of our STEM programs, from undergraduate to graduate. That was made then into a formalized aspect of the STEM graduate certificate. Actually, that should be three courses. I think that was an old slide in there. And then we taught it over, as we said, different venues, and we found out that this eighteen month is the best one. Concentrated periods of time in the summer for each of those topics, so that the teachers really get into it, really get submerged into it, really put their adult learner hats on and learn those concepts. And then a year-long implementation, this is what that goes in. And then the support of an education expert, as well as STEM content experts when needed. And then that, hopefully, will, actually, we were showing it, we have shown that it does, results in competent, confident, and comfortable STEM elementary educators.
The proposals for specifics that we're going to outline is somewhere in what was shared at the board work session. And, you know, Ivan also talked about this, but, you know, pending approval tonight, we're looking at starting July of 2013 formally. But, you know, there's a few steps that need to happen between now and then. And that, you know, what we're going to be sharing with you is an overview. There are more specifics that still need to be determined. But specifically, we'd be looking at recruitment of teachers. We'd be looking at, for that, more of a planning session, but recruitment of teachers, enrollment, and then subsequently, things leading up to the starting of the classes in July 2013. But we're looking at a cohort range of fifteen to twenty-five participants in year one, with a maximum of thirty, you know, looking at what the district is able to support. We're looking at thirty participants. We're also looking at establishing teacher representatives from each of our elementary buildings. This, I've shared this proposal with our key STEM committee, and there's some strong value to that. So that EastM and the work of the graduate program, there's a presence in each and every elementary building going forward. So there's some synergy, but also it's not one building that's a whole bunch of teachers that's really excited about this, and then one building is weaning some of the benefit, or a lot of the benefit, whereas other buildings are not. So we're looking, as part of the specifics, to establish getting people from every elementary building to be part of this cohort, first or second cohort moving forward. The class, of course, hosted here, with some understanding that they would also have to watch St. Catherine's. There would be Summer Institute class dates. And then really, and this was a question that came up at the work session, is every year we would be evaluating and considering if we were to continue offering this for additional teachers in the district. And we've talked, just theoretically, you know, there may be more elementary teachers than thirty that may want to participate, but also, we may have some secondary teachers who might be interested in this as well. And I know St. Catherine's is kind of working on that model, or down the road, it might be available. But of course, this is something every year as a district, we'd be having a conversation about and looking at providing this to our teachers moving forward. Tuition and funding, these are some of the specifics. We're looking, the tuition is about eighty-six hundred and fifty dollars. And this is where, this is the unique presentation of what we're trying to offer for Prior Lake Seven. And this is new for our district. We're looking at a teacher contribution portion as well as a district contribution portion. After completion of the program, we would require teachers to participate in the equivalent of twenty-two hundred and seventy-five dollars curriculum writing and training for district purposes. That breaks out to a balance of, you know, forty hours of curriculum writing, you know, in-district training, fall workshop, after-school sessions, facilitate some EastM activities at building site. But what we're really doing is expecting teachers to complete this course, stay with the district, and continue to provide, you know, benefits to students, but also to provide training and support for other teachers through this process, because we know not all teachers have the ability to go through this program, or not at that, at that place. But with developing teacher leaders and going through and earning their STEM certificate, there's going to be an ancillary effect to be able to support their colleagues and benefit more students in the long run. That curriculum writing and district training, you know, we're looking at completing those within a two-year window after the completion of the course. And it's under the direction of the district. As we come close to that eighteen-month completion, then we would start to plan out, when is the curriculum writing going to happen, when are the trainings? Because as much as, we really need to coordinate that time so that we really get some strong benefit in the district moving forward. Just some other things, you know, teachers will be able to apply their graduate credits for laying change and ultimately for their CEUs, which is license renewal. And against that component of, you know, we want our teachers to stay with the district and complete that time after they complete the course to provide, you know, that curriculum writing and training. But we also know too that circumstances do come up. We would need to refine that. And this is one portion here as far as, you know, teachers completing that window. We, Mr. Moniz and I do need to spend some time refining this a bit more. There's always extenuating circumstances that come up where teachers may have to leave the district, you know, due to, you know, spouses might have a job relocation. We would work with families, we would work with teachers in that. But of course, if they left the district early, we would ask for a priority portion of that contribution that happens. And that is our proposal for you this evening. For discussion if you have other questions. But we are seeking board approval this evening.
Do I have a motion to accept the EastM partnership with St. Catherine's? So moved.
Rich?
Second.
By Dan. Any questions?
Mostly for you, Jeff. How are we going to measure student achievement of making sure this actually does what it's supposed to?
That's a great question. And I think that's also going to take some time as well. You know, we have, we have strong math scores, we have strong science scores, but we know we have, we grow. We're going to, I think, we're going to have to take some time to look at where, set a benchmark of where our students are at. And I think over time, we're going to have to track how we see students respond to the instructions happening in the classroom. I think in those particular classes, we'll take some interest in, but also cumulatively, as we get out beyond one, two, three years, we should start seeing the effect of science and math starting to grow across the board. You know, the next topic of our data warehouse should help us facilitate some of that conversation and be able to evaluate that a bit more specifically. But, you know, I think, you know, we will see some improvement. We'll see higher student engagement. We'll see a higher student interest level in STEM or EastM. We'll also, I think, it will also bridge the gap between our secondary Project Lead the Way and robotics program. But the true achievement, we may see some, the first year, but I think over time is where we will start to see achievement. We'll be looking at that, we'll be tracking that.
Rich, a couple of questions. I know about Project Lead the Way. Can you talk about standardization of this curriculum? So when we can call ourselves an EastM district, what does that mean compared to all the other schools I hear that call themselves EastM?
Definitely. Lots of other people like to call, are calling themselves STEM schools. One of the big things that we work on is really talking about each one of those, the science, the technology, the engineering, and mathematics, technology being broader than just computers, including material technology, manufacturing technology, power technology, as well as intelligence, intelligence or information technology. One of the standards that we do is that it's aligned to what we know as an authentic requirement for engineers. The biggest problem that I had when I was doing the engineering curriculum was how do you teach engineering, I think Jeff told me that some of you are actually engineers. How do you teach engineering to a population that has not had physics or calculus or chemistry? Oh, to a large extent. And if you think about it, though, engineering has been done long before calculus was ever invented, before a lot of what we know about physics today is. So to some extent, we work on really standardizing along those lines. We do have teachers who have had, for example, engineering as elementary curriculum. We do show them how to use it, but what we've also found is that that curriculum is only as good as the teacher who teaches it. It can either be very rigid, because they don't feel comfortable with it, or it can be extremely expansive. And so our standard, if that's, because I go back to your question, of how do we know compared to Project Lead the Way, for example, we looked at the Project Lead the Way after we actually had developed our engineering course, and a lot of those main concepts of structures, materials, mathematics, line up exactly at the level that's appropriate for the elementary.
Are there any national standards, ISO or anything?
Funny, you should say that. The new standards, next gen science, next generation of science standards, I was just on the evaluation, I was asked specifically to look at the engineering portion of that, because St. Catherine's is one of the few places in the country, but also definitely in the state, that works with elementary-level engineering to the level that we do. So I was actually asked by the Department of Education STEM Specialist and John Nelson, whatever his title is, he's the big guy. If you're in education, you know him, to look at the engineering specifically and give some responses to it. And we not only align with those, those are actually a little not as rigorous as we felt that it could be, and not as in-depth, and also not as engaging. That was mainly the biggest thing that I found in looking at it. They seem to perpetuate typical ways of doing engineering that have not been appealing to females, that have not been inclusive, of those who come from backgrounds that don't come from communities that normally go into engineering and so forth. So we actually have taken that into consideration when we taught and developed our program.
And then one funny question. Jeff, talk about long-term implementation. This when we see we can put the stamp on our district that says, "We're EastM."
Yeah, as far as when we can put the stamp, I mean, we have a solid foundation with our environmental education work. And I think that that's a stamp that we can continue to survive with. I mean, we are about environmental education. The stamp's component, I would say we're well on our way. Our new science curriculum and math curriculum have STEM-aligned activities that our teachers are already doing in their classrooms. are already doing in their classroom. This really just builds a strong backbone and foundational base that's just going to use the tools that we have and also bring in more depth to our, to, to what we offer for kids. You know, I think every day we're getting better. I think as we start this program this summer, we're getting, we will be better further along. We're going to continue to refine our science and math. I think next year, we can start really having that conversation because we are this year. You know, our, our ESTEM committee is having a conversation identifying what are we currently doing in our classrooms that are aligned to ESTEM already? And we're already developing that list, you know, and some of those things are pockets of excellence. You know, we're, we're seeing what's happening in certain schools, but it's not being replicated across the district. We're, and so we're seeing a lot of that. You know, our charge for the rest of these years with that committee is to standardize that a bit somewhat. You know, and that's also going to take us further down the road of saying, you know, we are an ESTEM district. Because I really think we're on our way there. I mean, I, I, you know, for one, the board's committed to it, we're going to be ESTEM, we're working on it. Our curriculum, you know, the resources there, we're bringing the professional development in. The activities in large part are already happening in our classroom. It's just that consistent standardized approach that we're looking for to bring so that all kids are having these types of experiences with kids. So when do we begin ESTEM history? I think we're well on our way right now. I think we need more, more kind of dialogue and conversation about that.
I, I can say, having talked with many districts and actually have taught this graduate program with many districts, you're way ahead of the curve, I mean, at this point, which is meant to be a compliment, not, not making my job harder. But the thing is, is that you're also in a unique position. The partnership that we had with the Equal Stars, we have our student teachers coming to your classroom, a lot of lines of the environmental aspects. But the thing that you may not know is in 2009, we required all of our elementary education students to take our undergraduate STEM certificate. So they have the environmental biology, they have the chemistry of life, and they have the engineering, they're all required to have that. So to a large extent, your data is going to be influenced already. Your baseline is much higher than most other people, also because you have that, that strong partnership with our students who are benefiting from that, that aspect. So in some ways, Tom, like when you're saying, let's look at the data and see improvement, your improvement, you have to, to phrase that really well, and we can work in that kickoff when we design it to, to know where your gaps are and really define those well. But to a large extent, you're starting from a very high level compared to many other districts that I've worked with. And I was asked by one district, you know, how can we say that we're a STEM school? They were starting a STEM school. And I said, I, they said, so what's this, they were looking at engineering at the time because they knew how to do science, they knew how to do the mathematics, but they weren't sure about this E part. And they said, I said, so what is this thing? And I said, I've talked with the state and at the time I asked them whether they were going to have some certification and they said, I shouldn't say, but they actually have no plans for it right now. We were hoping that something would come up. So to a large extent, that district said, every one of our classroom teachers will be doing this STEM certificate concentrated in engineering through St. Case, and then we will consider them STEM certified. So to some extent, they defined that they felt that they were giving their teachers what professional development and what requirements and performance were needed to define them. And we helped bring them to another level of seeing what they could do with them.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I have one comment, I was in two buildings this week and had three teachers approach me asking me about this. So just in the short time we've been talking about it, it's already out there, so there is quite a bit of interest. Masters program started in oh-nine, under the ESTEM.
The graduate.
Graduate.
Started in oh-nine, yes.
What graduate, how many graduates so far?
Oh, you have me count again. About fifty to sixty.
About fifty to sixty, okay. And then.
End of this year.
Sure. And then dollars this week funded out of staff development?
Yes, this was allocated, this was brought to the board back in December and allocated for professional development purposes for ESTEM.
Okay. Any other questions? I have a motion to second for the ESTEM partnership with St. Catherine's. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries six zero. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Back up with Jeff and Marcus with the data warehouse.
Yes, I'll have Mr. Vazlo join me up here podium. Next topic. We have it for you in a memo in your board packet, an overview of our much anticipated data warehouse solution. We also presented this information back to you at the workshop several weeks ago. But since last November, we've had a committee, our PD committee actively researching and reviewing data warehouse solutions for the school district, and has gone through somewhat of an aggressive evaluation, research and evaluation process for looking at the vendors that are out there. Having a kind of a first round, we brought six vendors in, reviewed those products, went through an evaluation of those different vendors, came out of that with two finalists. And then most recently, in early part of January, had finalist presentations with our two, with two to, to kind of show us more, tell us more about their, about what they had in terms of a product. At that time, we did expand the group to include more, we had a couple clerical staff, we also had administrators, more technology staff, and we also invited board members and several of you were at those final, finalists presentations. And we're here this evening to present to you and seek board approval on going with the Ties Cognos data warehouse solution for the district to implement.
Do I have a motion to accept the data warehouse recommendation with the contract for Ties? Tom, side by side, motion. Any questions for them? I know we've talked and talked.
This is still within, well within allotted budget?
Well within our budget. Both of our finalists were, were within our, were within our budget and this continues to be so.
Talk, Rich, can you talk about implementation? When will this be, go live?
Ten days board approval.
Tomorrow. But then?
Ten days board approval. What we will look at is we will be signing contracts tomorrow.
Okay.
And at that point, it starts a eight-week process to merge data or have data go to Ties and from all of our different repositories into the data warehouse. That will, during that time, is a lot of planning, preparations. We've got with our PD committee, and I'll have you speak to that in just a minute, to talk about what that EPI looks like. But once we return from spring break, we anticipate that all of the data that we have in district will be in the data warehouse and will be ready to be used. And so we've certainly been having conversations about who will be using it, at least for the remainder of this year, and then also planning into next fall. So I'll turn that over to Ian Marcus.
Thank you. We, as a professional development committee, have talked about what our next steps look like. As Jeff mentioned, we would like an eight-week window where we take our current data from all of our data sets and do a lot of terms of data scrubbing, make sure that data goes in and out of the products correctly. We feel that eight weeks is a generous window to do that. While that process is taking place, we would like to identify a pilot group to use the data warehouse once we go live. We're expecting that to go live after that eight-week period of making sure that that's clean and then it's flowing in and out of products like it's advertised. The pilot group would consist of the professional development committee and administrators in the district. And then we're also working on with Ties, our vendor, for a train-to-trainer model, identifying who those trainers would be, and then creating steps on what a professional development rollout would look like in the fall.
Our professional development committee has approximately twenty-five to, twenty-five teachers on it, from elementary, middle school, and high school representatives, between our administrators, that would also expand that group significantly. There might be a couple other groups, particularly with our RTI, our special education constituency that we would incorporate in that. So we're, we're looking really at a target group of about sixty, you know, people to do the pilot yet this spring, you know, to go through that and then, as Marcus said, to make plans for implementation in the fall of next year.
Good.
You know, with all, with the big data dump or whatever you want to call it, most of that will be done by Ties, is that correct? I mean, they'll be entering a lot of the information for.
In judgment with our.
Other questions? I have a motion to second to accept the Ties data warehouse recommendation. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries six zero.
Thank you very much.
We wanted to open enrollment for Prior Lake High School for the 2013-2014 school year. Dave?
Each year, we approve a certain number of additional open enrollment students, and then we close our high school due to the capacity issues that we have. Some years, we've done it at twenty. Last year, we moved it up to thirty. And the question before us this year is, what should that magic number be, knowing that we're going into our largest years?
I think we're a year at twenty-five too. So I think we fluctuated between twenty, twenty-five, and thirty. You know, I, I've stood before each year and say, what do you want? I guess if every student came into one grade, I'd be very concerned at a number like thirty, but we know they tend to disperse themselves over the grades. Numbers in the high school are pretty fluid. By the time you get to the junior, senior level, we never know. You know, from when school starts, we find out a lot of times, two days in, the students aren't coming back. I guess at the risk of, of not overcrowding, I would be, you know, okay with the number we had last year. I think that gives us ample, ample room and ample time for our students that are going to private schools in our district. That has been said before, started all those Lakers, even though they're not from our, our area, from our, I forget the name now. But, you know, they may be open enrolled in the other buildings or taken to private school, then they step out in eighth grade. It's all been said before, so I'd be comfortable with it. And we're looking at the position of staffing for next year and a couple extra rooms. So I wouldn't want to go over that, we did it last year.
And currently, we have seventeen students that have applied for open enrollment.
Any questions or comments?
I've been in the city, that was.
Do I have a motion by anyone to approve a number? I mean, I hate to sit here and bargain with you, I know you said thirty.
You know, it's the board's decision. I can't look at thirty, that's what we went with last year. I guess I was coming with that, it's no surprise. We planned on last year, planned on this year, look at what our budget needs are. But obviously, I'll do what the board wishes.
And the, the point being that if we have seventeen now, if we, if we don't reach, if we stay at seventeen, we stay at seventeen. If it, it isn't a matter of picking and choosing, we are a public school system, so it is the first number of students that come to us, whatever that number is, and then we'll close it due to the capacity issues at high school. As David said before, when you have a very large class, you know, and you spread those students out among the entire building, it isn't, one more student doesn't necessarily make it the building that much fuller. But on the other hand, we want to be respectful to the students that are there and make sure that we have the space that we need for them.
And if we don't reach the thirty, we don't go recruit. So, you know, we're at seventeen. I think we're farther than that last year at this time. I think we're in the twenties, or anything, Martha. So we are down considerably from where we were this time last year. We look at a rush about August, you know, we get some last minutes. A lot of those actually last year were moving into the area, decided where they're buying the house, the housing market. They can find a deal here, they want our school, but it's, you know, two miles over our tenants' boundary, can't, and it's not.
And school starts early.
And that was, yeah, school started early, and that was a lot of our, that was a lot of the calls I got last year, about eight of them. Now, house buying is cheaper here, I found a screen, new deal here, but we're not here in the tenant's area, and that was, I'm sorry, we can't take you because we filled and then we opened and then we filled again. Correct? About the first week, that's about.
Sure. Jeff?
Once a student is accepted, are they considered every year that they have to open and enroll, or are they through graduation? So this would be seventeen in addition to seventeen or thirty who have never been to our school.
Correct.
Unless they were, yes, yeah. I guess they could have come through St. Mike's all the way through and been in our town. But yeah, if they're accepted in kindergarten, they are, are still.
Motion to accept.
I guess I'm, I'm having, I'm struggling with thirty myself, just because, maybe because I have two kids in the high school and I, I know everyone knows it's crowded. So I guess I would probably suggest maybe twenty-five.
True.
I just, you know, each year we add. And I know we're at the point where we need to expand or we're going to be voting on whether or not we're going to do that. But I just, I think, you know, more and more, we just can't always take everybody, so. And I think, I don't know if you have a sense of this, Dave, but I think people are becoming more and more aware that we're limiting our enrollment, and so it's, if they really wanted to get in, I would think they would have put their name on the list already.
They would. I've been limiting the number of exchange students we've been taking in the last couple years too, as we become overcrowded, especially if their language proficiency is not there. It was to take twelve or fifteen, I think, last year, ten, I actually turned down, most of ten exchange students last year. So we've been limiting on that end too. There is no set number, kind of get a saturation, didn't get ELL services. When you get thirty-eight students in class, a student coming from another country, uncomfortable with the language, that makes it really difficult. Sets them up for failure.
Okay.
I have a, sure. I know when, when we talked about this one other time, I don't know, was that a workshop? At one point, we're talking about twenty students. I know that every year, there, there's more and more students in that high school, and you know, we do have two more classrooms, so we're not really expanding the number of students per class. But it's all the infrastructure that's getting more and more condensed, you know, like the serving area, you know, those additional students have to eat lunch, those additional students have to do a lot of other things. I would, I would be more comfortable with twenty than was discussed at one point, as opposed to thirty.
I feel the same way. Lower number is better until we can do something about the crowding situation.
Okay. So I have a motion to cap the high school enrollment at twenty students for the 2013-2014 school year. Make that motion. Motion by Tom. The second?
Second.
Second by Dan. Any other further discussion? You can accept twenty?
Aye.
Yes, sir.
With that, I have a motion to second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries six zero. Under new business, we have the adoption of reduction in programs and positions if needed by Matt.
So I'm presenting the resolution tonight, directing the administration to make recommendations for reductions in programs and positions for reasons therefore. And I just wanted to put this in context, by adopting this resolution, you're not directing the administration to make reductions, simply noting that it's possible that there may be forthcoming reductions. And as we go through that process, if there are reductions necessary, we need to have this resolution in place. And so, again, just to make perfectly clear, or not, this is not dictating that there will be reductions, that if they're necessary, the administration will bring them forward.
Do I have a motion to accept the, let me read the exact, the resolution directing the administration to make recommendations for reductions in programs and positions and reasons therefore by Stacy? Second?
Second.
By Dan. Any further discussion?
I hope we don't have to use it.
Yeah, I know, we have in the last years, but with that, I have a motion to second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries six zero. Is it a, or a roll call? With that, I guess a roll call. Chad?
Aye, yes.
Rich?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Stacy?
Aye.
Todd, aye, and Dan?
Aye.
That carries six zero. Moving on, school board recognition week, with Dr. Gruber.
Yes. Each year, we have an opportunity to recognize the good work that our school board members do on our behalf, and this year, it is February eighteenth through twenty-second, two thousand and thirteen, and the resolution reads as follows. Whereas the Independent School District seven-one-nine School Board recognizes the importance of public education in our community, and whereas the school district and community appreciates the vital role played by those individuals who, as local school board members, establish policies to ensure an efficient, effective school system, and whereas school board members serve as a voice that enables our community to preserve local management and control of our public schools, and whereas school board members are charged with representing our local education interests to state and federal government, and ensuring compliance with state and federal law, and whereas school board members selflessly devote their knowledge, time, and talents as advocates for our schoolchildren, whereas local school board members are strong advocates for public education and responsible for communicating the needs of the school district to the public and the public's expectations to the district. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Dr. Suzanne Gruber, Superintendent of Prior Lake Savage Area Schools, along with our staff, recognize and salute the members of the Prior Lake Savage Area School Board by proclaiming February eighteenth through the twenty-second, two thousand and thirteen, as School Board Recognition Week. And I just want to thank each one of you for your dedication to our students and to our schools to make them the very best they can be, and it is my privilege to be able to work with each of you.
Thank you. Moving on to our policy.
Good evening.
Jeff?
I have several policies for you this evening as a second read. At the last board meeting, we took them all together, six-eleven, six-twelve, six-thirteen, point one, and six-twenty, because they're all somewhat related. Typically, I surround a lot of our homeschool, and that's the first policy, just the minor revisions to our homeschool policy. For larger, that, that stays unchanged. It also segues into our shared times program policy. This has to do with families who want to homeschool. There's children part of the time, yet also in public school part of the time. It also includes students in private school settings for PSEO, those types of things. It just sets the, the framework of, you know, educationally, what options are available for parents and students, and what, what we're looking at in providing for kids. We've got credit transfer, if you're looking at school, and some of those other things, or private school, want to make sure, if you're looking at graduation, that they do grant transfer for my school diploma. There are some, there were some changes to that procedurally, with making sure that documentation is handed in for, for families and students that are doing different classes outside of Prior Lake High School. And then finally, six-twenty is a, is a credit for learning, which is particularly valuable for community enrollment, and guidelines over that. All of those do have some changes to it. For the most part, there are some just slight changes in what we're requesting for documentation, but also providing clarification. We, we don't have a tremendous amount of, of, you know, students who, you know, who homeschool, and PSEO, and private school, but we put them all together. That is a sizable group, and, you know, in looking at that and trying to set the stage for what we're expecting, you know, the type of education that kids are getting coming into the high school, or expect into the, into the public school, setting for private school, they're looking at a high school all the way down the road. So these are presented before you as a second read, and approval.
Motion to accept policy six-thirty-one, six, I'm sorry, six-eleven, six-twelve, six-thirteen, one, six-twenty, and six-twenty-two.
Six-twenty-two is the pledge, we haven't got to that one.
We haven't got to that.
No, six-thirty, I first.
That'll be severed?
That'll be severed.
Okay.
If you'd like to approve it, you can start there.
We'll scratch six-twenty-two. I have Chad with a motion, and Stacy with a second. Any other further discussion?
Just one thing, I have spoke to several families who homeschool, and I asked them how they feel about how we handle this, and they say that, you know, in general, most schools make it hard, but they would like to really thank our school for making it easy with these policies, and making the policies nice and clear. So that's coming from several families that I spoke to, so thanks.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries six zero. Six-twenty-two?
The pledge will leave us, it's right in front of the camera. It is being presented for you this evening as a second read.
Okay.
There does not appear to be any provisions to the pledge.
No.
It's good to know.
Thank you. This, this policy was just put in MSBA format for you.
Okay.
Updating it, so as, as we move through all of the policies, to get them all in the same format and context, that's the change that's made here, so. Thank you, Mr. Holberg, for pointing there. I wondered what you were going to say.
Do I have a motion to accept policy six-twenty-two with the rewrite? Tom, second.
Second.
Stacy? Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries six zero. Onto administrative reports, superintendent's report.
Yes, this is my fifth year in the district, and beginning with our first data retreat, I think we started talking about it that particular night, about our data warehouse. So it's especially exciting tonight to know that we have approved a data warehouse that will be implemented within our district. It's been a goal, a board goal for the last couple of years to get this done, and we were able to do it this year, and with your urging and with your support, I believe that we will have better access to a composite look at each of our students from a variety of different lenses, that will really help us interpret and know what they need to know and learn to be able to be successful. So I think we will see many, many benefits from having the data warehouse as we move forward. So I commend Mr. Holberg and Mr. Malazo for their leadership as they've moved through this process in a very timely fashion, so that we can get it going, because I remember many of you saying, we want this in this year, so that it can be ready for implementation and use by our teachers and our administrators in the fall of two thousand and thirteen. So to have it approved tonight is really key in that process, so thank you to our leaders of the group, and for the board members that were able to take time to listen to the presentations. I think that was really helpful. And obviously, to the committee that worked very hard and diligently to make the right choice for our district. And secondly, we have been an environmentally strong district for many, many years, and this past spring, we became an Eastem district, and said, we're really going to work at this to make this the hallmark of who we are as a district. And to see tonight that we were able to move forward with the St. Kate's partnership, to bring the, the model that we use so well here, which is developing teacher leaders, to take that leadership role within their building and within our district, to take new learning out in that context. This will give us a new way to do that with the, with the STEM certificate for our teachers that we'll be offering. We've been working collaboratively with St. Kate's for many years, and this is a new venture that I think will really be a benefit to our students and to all of our teachers district, not only those that access this opportunity, but all of their peers across the building. So that's very exciting to see. And then back on just the normal kinds of things that are happening, but also very exciting, Tom Daris, a second grade teacher at Glendale Elementary, has been named our candidate for Education Minnesota as Minnesota Teacher of the Year. So he is one of one hundred and thirty-five candidates statewide, and the winner will be announced on Sunday, May, two thousand and thirteen. So we're excited for him, as we are each year when one of our teachers moves on to that state level competition. Our growth task force had our, we held our public forum last week, we could go tonight, as a matter of fact, and the district-wide listserv went out to our families with details of the Prior Lake High School addition proposal, and the next step is to have a final growth task force meeting tomorrow evening, where a formal recommendation will be brought from that meeting to the school board at our March fourth meeting. We will continue to use multiple forms of communication to have, to keep our public updated on the proposal, and I'm sure many of you saw the articles in the paper, both the Prior Lake American and the Savage Pacer this weekend, and so there are lots of different ways for parent, our parents and community members to access, both on our website, and certainly through the Prior Lake American and our newspapers, the Savage Pacer as well. Phone calls and emails are always welcome as we move forward in this process. On another topic, twenty Prior Lake High School students were inducted into the very first Minnesota chapter of the National Business Honor Society last week, and our Prior Lake Chamber President, Chad Lemare, was the guest speaker that evening. And to be eligible, a junior or senior must have completed or be currently enrolled in his or her third business course, and have a three-point-oh cumulative GPA with, with a three-point-five GPA in business courses themselves. So this was the very first ever, and we were very excited that that happened. Unfortunately, we were here and weren't able to participate, and hopefully, next year, we will be free to be able to be there as well. And that is what I have for you.
Okay. Administrative reports? Board reports? Tom?
We had a facilities meeting last week, Thursday. Nexus came in and did a presentation on how, how things are going. They are progressing along rather quickly. There is still a lot to do, and we are going to have a very busy summer with working on quite a few of the buildings. We also talked about helping adding maybe a staff member or two to help with some of the construction projects that are going to be happening, happening. Some of them are going to be held by, they're going to be done internally. Maybe having one of our more senior facilities staff member help with overseeing some of the construction and hiring somebody to backfill that position. By doing that, what we're saving in bringing the construction in-house, so to speak, us controlling the construction, we're able to save well into six figures. So by adding a staff member, or if we need to, one and a half or two, we'll still be saving quite a bit of money on, on all this, and we're still, and then we'll also still be able to make sure our summer facilities, the work in the summer gets done, and then through the next couple of years, that we don't fall behind on the maintenance of the everyday things.
Okay.
And I went to the community education meeting, and we spoke about the budget. They've actually had a budget surplus, and we can only keep twenty-five percent over per year, so they've been spending that down, and so decided not to raise any of the fees except for the swim, summer swim. They're raising that by four dollars, and it has not been raised, that specific one has not been raised since two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven, so.
Okay. Stacy?
I was just going to talk a little bit about the MSBA, the Minnesota School Board Association Leadership Conference, that our, my fellow school board members and myself attended. I think we, almost everybody at one point or another was there. There was a real, a pretty dynamic speaker. Usually, speakers that lead off a conference aren't always, but he was really good. Spoke a lot about the pillars of leadership, and, you know, just the qualities that you look at when you're looking at quality leadership. So that was pretty enlightening. We looked at, it gives us a chance to kind of meet with other districts, other, you know, people that basically service the schools, and so we spent some time looking at technology, what other districts were doing, you know, nearby, and talked to a lot of staff members and superintendents about how they implemented that, so that was kind of, you know, piqued our attention quite a bit. And then there's also an update on state finances, as far as how the schools, there's a lot of possible changes in funding of schools this year, and so I think basically, it's kind of the prelude to, we're not sure what's going to happen, but, you know, it's clear as mud. But it's, it's, it's interesting, they're definitely trying to, you know, figure out ways to educate or fund education, and so it continues to be looked at every day. So, yeah, that was it. We, we had a good time, I think it was a good, good conference.
Any other board reports?
Yes. This week, student council is putting on their last dance, celebrate the week, and that is snowball week, sort of snow week, where we, at the end of the week, we have our dance, and also our snow capes pep test. And so far, the dress-up days have been Monday, Friday day, it was something different besides Get Up and Go Day. Tuesday, tomorrow, we have Twin Day, we dress as however many other people you want to. Me, on the other hand, I'm just going to wear a Twins jersey, because I feel, I don't know, I don't have anyone else to dress up with, but...
Dave?
Maybe I'll, maybe I'll play that part. Right? Wednesday is superhero day, or hero day. You get the gist of that. Thursday would be Jungle Day, which is the theme of our, our dance this week. And then Friday, Forever and Always, Laker Spirit Day. And then Wednesday, our big activity for Snow Week is usually a dodgeball tournament, and this year, we have a few girls teams, too. It's always been boys-based teams, but there are a few girls teams, and there are twenty-two teams, so we have a pretty good turnout. We usually get a few more today, I don't know the exact number, but the deadline was Friday, so that's a big event. Several lunchroom activities, like, it's just a, it's a busy time, yeah.
Coronation's going on now.
Coronation's going on now, yes, that's, that's what I feel, right. That was a makeup from yesterday, which was canceled due to the, the snow, the snow scare, so.
That's right. The snow scare.
Good.
But they didn't, sorry.
Yes. Any other board reports? Feature events, we have the growth task force meeting, like we said, tomorrow night, five o'clock, that is open to the public, if they'd like to attend. We have no school on February eighteenth, Monday, and the board study session on February twenty-fifth, here at the district service center at six o'clock. Any other stuff to bring to the board? I have a motion to adjourn committee. Stacy, second. By Tom? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries six zero. Good evening. Thank you.